Before I call the meeting to order, I do want to make a couple of statements. I want to first thank Clark County School District for allowing us to use their facility at such a short notice. I personally believe that, personally, Ovita Thornton, believe that we could have probably done this in a more expedient way, so not to disengage people. My colleague, Patrick Davenport, always remarks that the City Hall is the people's house. So we're just going to take a vacation from the people's house right now, and we're going to try to get some things in order as far as we're concerned. I've gotten a lot, I've gotten some calls, I don't want to exaggerate, on why the shift and why the change. I know people are familiar with, most people are familiar with our last month's regular meeting, but after that meeting, there were some concerns and some rumors that there were guns also in that chamber, and we were not equipped to handle any kind of threat, not just for ourselves. I'm quite sure none of the commissioners just love their district so much they're willing to die for it, but also for our constituents that come down. We wanted to ensure your safety, and we will be working on safety measures as we move along. We, we got to be honest with ourselves that the world is changing, it's different, and we've got to keep up with the differences. We just did not anticipate some of the recent events. I am also sitting in for the mayor again. I think he felt he needed some R and R, but we're going to carry on and we're going to have a smooth and productive meeting. I have no problems and I have no regrets about serving as Mayor Pro Tem. I've gotten some calls about that too today. I do not feel threatened, I do not feel being used. I feel as though this is my job and I'm going to do it. And so if there's questions about the mayor's absence, I should suggest that individually as taxpayers here, you should probably reach out to him. But again, we're going to do and have a productive meeting, and we're going to respect each other, and with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call?
Davenport?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Wright?
Present.
Fisher?
Here.
Cool?
Here.
Don't happen.
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Clerk. Because of these changes, I am going to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to add the suspension of rules of procedure related to the regular meetings being required to convene in City Hall as Agenda Item A1.
So moved.
Uh, we, you push a button there?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second by, uh, we had a motion from Commissioner Wright and seconded by Commissioner Taylor. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Anybody opposed to this? Okay. Well, we're moving right along with these changes here. I am now going to ask the county attorney to read a statement into and be made a part of the minutes of March the 7th, a meeting regarding to the change of location. Attorney Dre?
And a clear by that's May the 7th. The meeting location for tonight's meeting was changed after notice was provided in compliance for the Open Meetings Act codified in OCGA Sections 50-14-1 through 50-14-6 due to special circumstances related to public safety concerns that could not adequately be resolved prior to tonight's meeting due to recently identified security challenges that constitute a threat to the public safety at the mayor and commission's normal meeting place, Athens Clark County City Hall, 301 College Avenue, Athens, Georgia. This meeting location change is intended to be temporary while changes are implemented at City Hall in order to resolve these significant security concerns and to ensure the safety of elected officials, staff, and members of the public. Tonight's new meeting location, the Clark County School District Vernon Payne Meeting Hall at 595 Prince Avenue, provides a parking lot for those attending the meeting, a larger seated audience area, a security checkpoint and security features, better spacing for public comment, camera assistance for meeting live streaming, and more accessible entrance. Notice the meeting location change was provided to Athens Banner Herald, which is the legal organ of Athens Clark County, on May 6, 2024, more than 24 hours in advance of tonight's meeting. It was also posted publicly on Unified Government's website on May 6, 2024, as a news flash, which makes it both publicly accessible and automatically sends it out to approximately 600 subscribers who have registered to receive ACC Gov. news updates. The Unified Government's online calendar was also updated on May 6, 2024 to reflect the new location. Additionally, notice the change was posted on the Unified Government's main social media accounts on Facebook, X, Nextdoor, and Instagram immediately after the news flash was posted. An amended physical notice and agenda was also paced, posted on Monday, May 6, 2024, more than 24 hours in advance of tonight's meeting in City Hall, which is the normal place the mayor and commission's regular meetings. I would also add that because this is a school facility, guns are prohibited in such a location, and currently, we are not at liberty to prohibit guns at the City Hall,
With respect to Agenda Item A1, which we covered, I am going to ask for a motion to approve and suspend the rules of procedure related to the regular meeting being required to convene at City Hall. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Link, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. I'm going, okay, we're going, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, we're in order. Okay, we're moving right along here. I'm going to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to suspend, for the suspension of rules of procedure under Agenda Item D related to public input.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Link. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Okay, now we're going back to what I'm kind of familiar with.
I hope everybody understood what just happened, but again, it's an, it's really, it was an emergency, so we've done everything legally to ensure your safety. We've had our roll call. Now, and before I go to Item B, I have asked Patrick, Commissioner Davenport, to read the civility clause in the absence of Mayor Gertz.
All right. Adopted by Georgia Municipal Association, over 100 cities have adopted this civility pledge. The way we govern ourselves is often as important as the positions we take. Our collective decisions will be better when differing views have had an opportunity to be fully vetted and considered. All people have the right to be treated with respect, courtesy, and openness. We value all the input. We commit to conduct ourselves at all times with civility and courtesy to each other.
Thank you, Commissioner Davenport. Now, moving along with following our agenda as printed, can, uh, we need a motion to approve minutes for the meetings of Tuesday, April the 2nd, Friday, May the 3rd, a non-voting meeting of Tuesday, April the 9th, and Tuesday, April the 24th.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I don't believe we have the minutes yet for the non-voting meetings.
I can't, I can't hear you.
I don't believe we have the minutes yet for the non-voting meetings, so I think we're just voting on April 2nd and May 3rd.
Is that what you had reached out to Comish, um, Ms. Bratton about earlier today?
Yes. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, April 2nd and Friday, May 3rd.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, tell me the dates again?
Tuesday, April 2nd and Friday, May 3rd.
Ms. Bratton, are we good with that?
Yes, Ms. Bratton.
Okay. Jesse has made a motion to approve Tuesday, April the 2nd, and Friday, May the 3rd. Can we get a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bratton, do we have any written communications?
We have several committee assignments from Mayor Gertz. Legislative Review Committee, Solid Waste Residential Collection, Zonin Franchise Approach. This advances work already begun by the citizens of Solid Waste Test Force and prepares us for full commission action. The Legislative Review Committee developed a process for creating new tax allocation districts or amending existing tags. To the Government Operations Committee, developed a Clean Energy Resident Commission that integrates existing work of espalused user groups for associated projects. That's all.
Thank you. Now, okay. All right, he gave me another thing. I'm going to ask for a motion to sup, oh, we did, we did discuss this, I'm sorry. I am going to ask for a motion to approve the suspension of rules of procedure related to public input under Items E, G, and J, to provide that public input will be limited to two minutes per person with notice, with notice of 30 seconds remaining, and provide that only individuals who signed up in person between 5:00 and 6:00 shall be allowed to provide public input for the non-agenda items of collusion in the meeting. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by, motion by Commissioner Link, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Okay, we're done. We had to do all of that to try to make these adjustments. So, um, we've had our civility calls, we voted on our minutes, and we've done our suspension of rules, and I understand we had some recognitions at this point. Mr. Hollis, do you want to step up? I don't see where people have left my notes for you. So since I don't have no notes in front of me, I'm just going to let you do what you
Good afternoon. On behalf of Public Utilities, we have been awarded seven awards from the Georgia Association of Water Professionals. We have almost 246 staff, full-time, part-time interns, making sure that we have clean water and sewer treatment. The first award we want to bring up is the Best Operated Water Treatment Plant of the Year. Accepting the award is Will Cottrell, Superintendent, Tiger Brooks, Operations Coordinator, Daphne Little, Compliance Supervisor, and David Smith, Plant Supervisor. Next award is for Public Outreach. A exceptional comprehensive education program also given by the Georgia Association of Water Professionals. Jackie Shearer accepting award. This next one is given to the Best Operator in the District Two of Water Treatment, David Smith. It's the best operated bio solids program in the state of Georgia. Accepting this award is Michael Hughes, the Superintendent of Water Reclamation, and Hannah So Mike and Hannah, we're not done. For continuous permit compliance for 12 years for the Cedar Creek Water Reclamation Facility. Next up, Mill O'Conie, Water Reclamation, for 10 years permit compliance in the state of Georgia. We got Greg Maddox and Michael Hughes, Superintendent. Last but not least, Gold Award for the JG Beeston Treatment Plant for one-year permit compliance, Will Cottrell and Tiger Brooks.
Well, congratulations to the water tree, and congratulations to you, Mr. Hollis. You had to be under good leadership to have good work like that. Thank you. Let's give them all a hand. All right, we're moving down to our consent, um, agenda items. Um, we, if there are people who want to speak to any of the consent agenda items, I first need to ask, is there any commissioner that wants to take anything off of consent? That's a, that's, that's historic. Okay, well, we're going to move that right along. Consent agenda, oh, okay.
I have nine. I have nine ordinances to read on the consent agenda, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Agenda Item One, an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to the, to control of vegetation and for other purposes. Agenda Item Two, an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to defined contribution plans and for other purposes. Agenda Item Three, an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to the Athens Clark County Pension Plan and for other purposes. Agenda Item Four, an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to donated leave and for other purposes. Agenda Item Five, an ordinance to amend the FY 2025 Operating in Capital Budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if awarded from the Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council's CJCC Accountability Court Grant Program for expenses related to felony drug court, treatment and accountability court, veterans court, DUI drug court, and family treatment court, and for other purposes. Agenda Item Six, an ordinance to amend the FY 2024 Operating in Capital Budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if awarded from congressionally-directed spending for expenses related to police communication equipment upgrades and for other purposes. Agenda Item Seven, an ordinance to amend the FY 2024 Operating in Capital Budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if awarded from congressionally-directed spending for expenses related to replacement of law enforcement protective equipment and for other purposes. Agenda Item Number Eight, an ordinance to amend the FY 2024 Annual Operating in Capital Budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if awarded from congressionally-directed spending, CDS, to augment recruitment and retention of law enforcement officers and for other purposes. Agenda Item Number Nine, an ordinance to amend the FY 2024 Annual Operating in Capital Budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if awarded to the Housing and Community Development, HCD, Department from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Preservation and Reinvestment for Community Enhancement Price Grant Program in order to provide funding for pres, in order to provide funding for preserving and revitalizing manufactured homes and manufactured home communities and for other purposes. Those are all the ordinances on the consent agenda, Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the consent items, agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
It was motion by Commissioner Link and seconded, I believe, Commissioner Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Those, are there any no's or disapprovals? Okay, we're moving right along here. Now we're moving to old business. Again, if members from the community would like to speak to any items from 21 to 27, 21 to 27. Yes, sir. Oh, yes, sir, could you give us your name?
Yes, this is Dylan Woolsey, 395 River Road, and I'd like to speak on Items 24, 26, and 27. For Item 24, in Section, in Goal Area 1, Section C, this language has been replaced of keep residents safe through community-centric services with collaborative strategies between the police and the community. I, I just also hope that in the future, when we...
Could you speak in your mic a little, little louder, please?
Yes, is this better?
No.
Maybe pull it up. Is it on?
Is this better?
Yes, much better.
Close.
All right. So for Goal Area 1C, for the replacement of keep residents safe through community-centric services with, between the police and the community, I just hope in the future, when we're funding, for example, alternative response teams or other services, we don't just look at the police, but we also look at other community-centric services as well. For Item 27, on the agenda, also relating to this, more public trust between the government and just our society in general can definitely be helped with additional funding with the alternative response team to prevent more criminalization as well. And with Item 26, I think the additional homelessness funding recommendations should be approved to help with addressing our homeless population and providing better services to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bradley Hubacher. I am the current CEO of the YWCO. Tonight, I'm joined by several members of our Board of Directors and several members of the YWCO staff, and asking if you would support funding for the YWCO Girls Club. The YWCO Girls Club started in 1976 and has served over 10,000 girls over the past 48 years. It seems very appropriate that we are here tonight, the Clark County School District offices, as everything we do at Girls Club is to help Clark County girls do well in school and in the long run, be successful in life. Most of our campers come from low to moderate income families for underserved Athens communities, and we do not churn any girl away due to finances, so we need your help in funding this program. I do want to tell you about a new opportunity that has come up since we spoke at the City Council Work Session last month. This year, our 5th to 7th grade girls will be working with Dr. Heather Lavender at UGA. She's a professor who's doing a hands-on STEM experience for the purpose of developing in our children a love of learning about science and math and showing them possible future careers in science and technology. We're very excited about that program enhancement. I would like to thank the mayor and the council as you continue to explore funding options for the YW Girls Club. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Shanice Allen, and I reside at 130 Meredith Ridge Road. As a board member of the YWCO, I am here to address our summer Girls Club program not receiving funding for the FY 25 CBBG. I have engaged with several commissioners regarding this matter. First, I want to express my gratitude to those who have collaborated with Commissioners Link, Fisher, and Myers to explore alternative funding solutions, not only for our Girls Club program, but also for the Chest and Communities Project Rewire and Athens, Athens Clark County High School Completion Initiative Education Matters Program, which were also overlooked for funding. I appreciate the attention given to our concerns for the welfare of the children and the proactive steps taken to secure funding for these vital programs benefiting our youth. Moving forward, I hope that all remaining commissioners will support the efforts to allocate funding to youth programs offering, offered by organizations with extensive community involvement spanning decades. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Allen.
Hello. My name is Linda Lloyd, and I reside at 205 Ambler Road, Athens, Georgia. What I'm here speaking on is the recommendations, number 26. We have, we've been recommended Economic Justice Coalition by our Above and Beyond Home Healthcare Cooperative to provide funding for five homeless people to be C and As. And I want you all to know that we're not going into this blindly because we have a company that has operated for years, and the people will be bonded through the Georgia Department of Labor, just like any other population, they want a chance. And, and this chance is what economic justice is about. We want to show that if we can pay people at least $20 an hour per year and have some more funding adjusted to that because we're going to be getting Medicaid funding as well, it's going to be Medicaid approved, and so we'll be able to build Medicaid and we can continue with the jobs. We are providing and offering the financial literacy that they need, and also, if we have any persons with addiction and alcohol-related problem, we're going to get that help, we wrote that into the grant, but we're going to provide whatever support is needed. And then the other thing, we have, I have a lot of case management experience, wherein I follow the people, and I make sure that they get what they need. So I'm telling you all and recommending you all to fund Economic Justice Coalition Above and Beyond Home Care Cooperative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Thank you, Ms. Lloyd.
Good evening. Uh, Robert Flanagan, P.O. Box two-nine-five, Athens, Georgia. Um, I'm here also to support, uh, the funding recommendation for Economic Justice Coalition. I'm here, uh, as the executive director of the organization, uh, that Ms., uh, I inherited from Ms. Linda Lloyd. And as you, many of you already know, that, um, EJC has put in a lot of work in the community, um, in the regards of economic justice and civic engagement, um, twenty-plus years to be exact. And so we've built up our capacity as an organization, um, to be able to carry out a, a program like this. And as Ms. Lloyd stated, um, you know, there, there are certain people in our community that need another chance or a second chance. And, uh, for that reason, uh, we will carry the proper insurance to cover if any incidents were to come up or arrive. Um, we also are in partnership with, um, or I, as a ED, am attending some of the nonprofit capacity building, uh, programs and trainings that y'all have, that y'all offer through HCD. And so, um, we, we feel that we will be able to carry out this program if funded. And, um, we do have a transition plan like Ms. Lloyd spoke about. Um, we would love to have you as a partner if considered for this funding and funded, uh, to be able to reach us a point of sus- to be able to reach a point of sustainability for the Above and Beyond Home Healthcare Program, um, through becoming Medicaid certified so that we won't have to rely on grant funding to continue our services in the community. And so we can continue to train people and offer those second chance employment opportunities at a high wage level. Um, so we hope you consider that funding and, uh, thank you. We're here for any follow-up questions as you may have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan.
Good evening. I'm Pat Peterson, three-three-five Forest Heights Drive in, here in Athens. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Economic Justice Coalition, and I'm here tonight to encourage your support of the funding for their project in training CNAs, uh, to help folks who are homeless. I'm also representing our board president, Dolores Lee, who was unable to be here tonight. She asked me to speak for her. This funding will not only help get more trained CNAs into our community and within our aging population, that's badly needed, but it will also help them stabilize their lives. And it will also, uh, help folks who are homeless get some of the care that they need. It's an opportunity as well for Economic Justice Coalition to collaborate with other organizations here in, in Clark County who, uh, support and provide wraparound services for the homeless. So again, I encourage you to support funding for Economic Justice Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Good evening, Athens Clark County Commission. I am Dr. Diane Dunston. I am MDFAAP. That's Medical Doctor Fellow of the American Academy of Pediatrics. I am an expert in the field of medicine and youth development and so proud to serve as Chair of the Board of East Athens Development Corporation. I want to thank you for your support of our CDBG, um, proposals that have come from your Department of Human and Community, Housing and Community Development, formerly HED. That was Housing and Economic Development. We've had a longstanding relationship with this government. I want you to know that I am here and available to you and the community. That's why I keep doing this and I will tell you like I did over thirty years ago, I will never ask this government to do more than I do. So that I have put for many years my finances and all resources, especially my talents, into this community. We have a proven record and want to thank you for considering what we've done in the past and what we plan to do in the future a lot more with your support and help. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dunston.
Good afternoon. Uh, Lewis, District One. Um, I'm here to also talk about, um, I believe it's, uh, item twenty-four, the revised, uh, strategic plan. Um, on this plan, there's very vague language about Commissioner outreach, um, and increasing that Commissioner outreach. I'm here to ask that there, there are specific guidances, including, um, having monthly town halls separate from public input for each Commissioner, um, in case something like what happened last week happens. Uh, at this moment, there's actually no specific language or specific guidance about Commissioners needing to meet with their constituents. I've been here several times about the ceasefire resolution and that has actually allowed me to see that there is a huge gap in what is supposed to be a democratic process. We have Commissioners here who are committed to meeting with their constituents and some who very specifically aren't and have been really disrespectful in actually interactions that we have had with them. For example, we have Davenport that's actually known in his constituency. He is my Commissioner. I've been talking to people about how to get meetings with him or how to get him to respond to messages. And they've told me, oh, he doesn't really meet with black people he doesn't already know. I've been told this at the ACC Dems as well. His response was so shocking that I actually printed it out for anyone who wants to look at it. Um, we also have Evita Thornton, who, when asked for a meeting, said to let her constituents know, this is also printed for anyone who wants to see it. They are not as important as anything else that she has got going on. So without specific guidelines about Commissioner behavior and the necessity of meeting with constituents, we have people who forget that they are public servants and do not speak to their constituents.
I'm sorry, your, uh, your time is up. Thank you. And we're not going to do no applauding.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Linda Stevens. I work with EJC and Above and Beyond. And I come tonight, speaker on behalf of Linda Lloyd and my boss, Mr. Roger Fleming, about Above and Beyond. It's a good organization because during the time of the pandemic, I served as day employees in hiring, um, certified CNAs and going into the homes. So this is a great opportunity for us to serve the homeless in Athens and give them the opportunity to feel needed and wanted while so they can have employment and a place to live. So on behalf of the EJC, I hope y'all approve this, uh, bill that we offered, you know, y'all tonight to approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens.
Greetings. I was just waiting for these two to finish speaking. Uh, I am-
Could you give your name, please?
My name is James Lee from Winterville, Georgia. Uh, I am addressing tonight adoption number one on the consent agenda, which says ordinance for recommendation related to invasive plant species. I am asking the members here to reconsider this for adoption and instead replace it with an ordinance related to invasive human species. And the reason why I'm asking you to reconsider this is because-
We've already moved on from consent agenda comment.
Hold, hold up.
Representative-
Sir.
Petrea has detailed on his website-
Sir.
and the Georgia State Prisons declare on their website that since twenty-twenty-two, invasive human species-
Sir.
have gone into prison for two-hundred-and-fifty-one illegal aliens who molest Georgia children. A hundred-and-ninety-two illegal aliens have been murdered in, in Georgia.
And, and I, I just can't believe we're escorting people out again, but you've got to see-
In Georgia.
Walk him out. Walk him out.
Can, can we recommend this?
No, we can't do nothing but walk you out. No, he's out. Now let me say something right now. And I, let me say something right now. We're going to follow this agenda, okay? We're going to follow this agenda and we're not going to do these personal attacks. And I thought this was a very calm, collected meeting tonight, and it's going to stay that way, okay? Are we in agreement? That you can clap on. Okay. Now I did make a mistake. I forgot to ask for a public, uh, um, input on the consent agenda item. And maybe there was a reason I forgot. Maybe the good Lord just knew that vibe was going to come. So I'm going to go back and look at the consent agenda items. Everybody's here looking, which the gentleman tried to connect with his statement. Is there any public, um, um, comment on any of the consent agenda items which were from one to?
Twenty.
One to twenty. One to twenty. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening again. I am Dr. Dunston and number thirteen I would like to speak to. Uh, happy to see that you have an extension of the nonprofit leases for fiscal year twenty-five. I would like for you to please investigate this carefully. For over twenty years, I was tasked as Executive Director of the Athens Neighborhood Health Center and serving on the Board of East Athens Development Corporation, paying to this government close to three thousand dollars a month in, it was called, it wasn't called rent, it was called, um, maintenance fees. And so the story goes, almost twenty years later, finally, someone listened to me and others who said, there is some inequities and serious discrepancies in who has to pay. It was hard. It took money out of the services that we should have been giving to the community. I was able to do it because I worked very hard and didn't have to get a salary from tax dollars in government. But again, look at the history and see who had to pay and why. And now, as you move forward, try to be a little fairer in dealing with those of us who are often struggling.
Dr. Dun- oh, well, you cut it off right at the time.
Lori Do, four-one-nine, Millet Terrace. I want to advocate for adoption of the invasive plant code revisions that will help protect our property investments. I did want to voice concerns about the enforcement aspects mentioned at the agenda setting meeting indicating individuals previously reported with invasive plant issues would not be held to the new code revisions. While I understand due process concern, there are many examples when ordinance and laws are changed. In these instances, a compromise is often given so individuals are not penalized for something which occurred in the past, but instead are provided a reasonable timeframe to comply with the new ordinance or law. My concern is the potential transfer of burden if individuals that currently have invasive plants which have spread to other properties are permanently absolved of responsibility, thus taking away any incentive to eliminate the plants and prevent further spread. Furthermore, those property owners to which the plants have already spread will then be penalized according to the revised code if they're spread from their property to an adjacent property. However, these property owners cannot successfully rid their property of invasive plants if the original owners have no incentive to remove them. This unfairly transfers the responsibility to property owners that in many cases have worked diligently to notify the initial property owners of concerns with invasive plants to no avail. In many ins- in many situations, current issues with encroachment of invasive plants exist in neighborhoods. If individuals are absolved of responsibilities through grandfathering them to a current code, which is not enforceable per, per the ACC lawyer, the entire neighborhoods will be, uh, adversely impacted by the continued spread of these plants. In closing, if approved, I respectfully ask the commission and city leaders to reconsider, reconsider the initial stance and instead apply a reasonable timeframe to comply with the new ordinance, which is not so lengthy to allow for further spread in that area. Again, it will take a neighborhood approach to effectively rid the current situation plaguing many properties.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Atkinson, three-eight-five, Millet Terrace. Um, I concur with my neighbor Lori. Uh, we believe that the current code does include bamboo as an invasive plant and we appreciate that the proposed revision further clarifies this. However, we cannot allow the homeowners who have neglected to manage bamboo to be absolved of any consequences. They should be given reasonable time to address it. Um, I, I myself have been battling the bamboo for over eleven years. This bamboo came directly from my neighbor's yards and I quickly learned how damaging it is. And for eleven years, I've been out there cutting it, digging it, and poisoning it. But my neighbors have allowed their bamboo patch to grow into a bamboo forest that takes up much of their yard and is now spreading towards their front yard as well. And as that patch grows, it grows with energy and it sends out more and more bamboo runners. It problem just becomes exponential. And the problem has become so exponential now that it's damaging my fence, an expensive fence that I need to contain my animals. Um, it is damaging my shed. It is damaging my home and I cannot contain it unless they do. I can be out there cutting it every week and I cannot control it unless they do something about it. So I respectfully ask that you consider revising the proposal to allow the neighbors reasonable time to manage the bamboo issue. Again, thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. Since we did get, um, since I got you out of order, um, now I will look to, um, the commission, I guess we'll go back to, we had already approved and, um, seconded, but we're going to go back through the process, okay? So for all of the consent agenda items, even though you've heard the input, uh, can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Excuse me, Mayor Portem. If you don't mind, I'm going to ask that number one be taken off for a question for the manager.
What's the name?
Number one, the invasive plant.
Okay. Are you going to take it off?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Um, at this point then, each item, so we'll go from two to, duh-duh-duh. Twenty, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Those, uh, not approving? Okay. And so we'll move number one to the old business. Is that what you're wanting to do, Ms. Lynn?
Yes, ma'am, it is. Give me, give me, go ahead.
So our apology for a couple of things today. Okay, so we're moving on then to, and I do want to thank all the speakers that have come before us thus far.
Point of order. Did you want me to comment on what I wanted to comment about number one or?
If you want to. I was just going to add it to the-
Oh, I thought we were, I thought we were- Oh, I thought we were, I thought we were ready for that.
No, I didn't do that yet. But you're going to be number one when I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm moving that since you pulled it, I'm going to move it, okay?
Okay.
Procedurally. So we're going to go ahead on and follow the agenda as printed. Is that okay? Commissioner Taylor said yes, ma'am, so we're good. All right? Sorry. All right, so now we are totally, totally moving along, and I am going to, the last thing that we discussed, we just went back and we revisited the consent agenda items, and Commissioner Hamby did pull off number one, and, but we did agree to approve all the other items on the consent agenda item. We also have listened to input on the old business, so we're going to go with item number, twenty-one? Yep. We're going to start with item number. He's coming off of consent. And then we're going to go with Mr. Mike, so we're going to make that number one. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, it's hard to see you from down here, but I'll.
It's hard, you don't need to see me.
I wanted to ask the manager a question about, about some of the concerns, a couple of them. The way I read this, there's no grandfathering in of this situation, and we do hope that neighbors can work together to solve the problem. Am I right in saying that?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. And with that, I hope we can address and keep working at this, at this situation that I know persists amongst several folks in Five Points and elsewhere across town. So with that said, I'll make another motion to approve the recommendation of the LRC.
I'll second.
Excuse me, Commissioner, I mean Attorney.
Yep. I want, so I reached out to Chief Assistant Attorney Hines, who worked with this. She indicates that she did advise that any bases that have already spread in someone's yards would need to be spread in, would need to be grandfathered in. So I would like, if there's, that's a concern of the commission, I would like the, because it wasn't illegal at the time, and that was her, that was the concern. I wasn't in those meetings. If the commission wants us to go back and take a look at that, I'm happy to. It would require table in tonight, but that is the advice she gave, and that's how the ordinance reads currently.
Okay.
I know that's not what you want, Commissioner.
With that in mind, I'd like to amend our motion to hold this until we get this figured out. So thank you.
Commissioner Myers, that's, you're the chair. Any input?
I will make a second on Commissioner Hamby's motion, and we will follow up and get some more information back to clarify the enforcement that would happen now with this code so that we can make sure that Commissioner Hamby and other commissioners know how the new policy will be addressed moving forward with the enforcement. Unless the manager's office, oh, I made my motion. Let's vote on my motion.
Well, we have a motion in a second, so we're going to continue with the discussion, then we'll see if we have a vote. And I saw Commissioner Wright's hand, and then I saw Commissioner Hool's hand.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Ms. Doakes, the neighbors that spoke, this has been going on so long. It was in my district when we started talking about this, and now it's in Commissioner Hamby's. And it is a challenging, I'm also on Legislative Review Commission Committee, and it's a very challenging topic, and we do want to be able to address it legally. And it might be that when we, if it goes back to committee, we maybe capture some steps of how it would be. I mean, I've got it coming up in my yard. Apparently, I need to cut it down, document that it's not there so that when it comes back, and the backdrop is my neighbor's, as we say, forest, bamboo forest. But anyway, but I think the clarification of how it can legally move forward can embellish it to make it better to launch out and be effective. So I welcome it coming back to LRC and us. Is that what you were saying, Chair Myers?
Yeah, yeah, so that we can clarify the enforcement and how, with code enforcement, and how that will go forward and make any adjustments needed for the application of this ordinance.
I can provide some documentation from my backyard if we need it.
Commissioner Hool.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. As I recall from our discussions in LRC about this, we had a number of meetings on it, the way that this would move forward is, you know, any existing plants that are in the ground are, I guess what we would say, grandfathered in, unfortunate term. But if a property owner were to take out that plant, you know, noting bamboo, for example, with its horizontal structure up to the property line, any new growth would qualify under this law. So this is really just, you know, what's currently on your property already, you would have to deal with on your own, but if you deal with your side of the property and your neighbor does not, then when it comes back over, that would be enforceable. That was my understanding from our discussions in LRC. And with that in mind, especially with how much we have on our committee agendas and with how much time we spent on this, I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve.
Okay. Did you, did you make a, what did you just say, Jesse? What was that last thing you said?
I made a substitute motion to approve.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Okay, does any, would anybody like to second Jesse's motion to, substitute motion?
I'll second. Can I make a comment after?
Yes. So it's been, so the substitute motion is on the floor, and do you want to make the comment now, Commissioner?
The motion I should make first. So if we send about the LRC, we can approve it as is now, so we can have some type of enforcement mechanism moving forward, and we can still send it back to LRC for revisions. So we'll take action tonight for those properties that does have invasive species, and then we'll, we can send it back to LRC to look at the enforcement and the grandfathering. So just holding it up like, you know, for thirty days until our June meeting is fine, but at the same time, there are some concerns in our community of existing properties that have some concerns with invasive species, and, you know, acting now would be great, but I'm indifferent.
Well, you're not really indifferent. Any more comment, Commissioner Myers?
Yes, I'd just like to ask the manager's office to clarify one more time, repeat that, and verify what Commissioner Hool said, but coming from your, your place. So I'm, and this is my question for you. I'm the homeowner, I deal with the bamboo in my yard, I put up a little fence in the dirt like you're supposed to do, and then more bamboo comes over, and now I can use that ordinance. Is that correct?
As I understand it, Attorney Drake, please correct me if I'm wrong, if you understand it differently. If the ordinance is passed tonight, wherever the plants are today are grandfathered. The next day, if it's encroaching on someone's property, that is enforceable. Only what's on somebody's property today is grandfathered. So if you're encroaching on somebody's property today, that is not enforceable.
I think I understand it, having had some conversations with Ms. Hines about this, like Commissioner Hool explained it. If we pass this tonight, it would require, like Commissioner Wright on her property, clear her property off and to eradicate from her property. Then if it came back from the neighbor's property on her property, you could issue a citation. I think that's the interim step. And so that's, that's the way, that's the way Ms. Hines has been texting me, she understands it as well. So I think to avoid any confusion, you know, I don't want to sit here and say it's okay when that's not my understanding, that it'd be best to go back, because then there'll be people questioning why we haven't enforced it. I think there has to be that interim step. I think it's like Commissioner Hool explained. So, for example, so that's what I think, and maybe we need to go back and look at it, if that's not comfortable for everybody.
I would offer, I think Attorney Drake and I may be saying the same thing.
Okay, okay, good, I'm sorry, I'm glad we are, I didn't mean not to say that, that's what you're saying? Okay, good, we're on the same page then.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Commissioner Myers?
Then assuming that that's the case, we could still hold it for a month, we could clarify that in a memo from the attorney's office to clarify for a fellow commissioners that, and we could return it for a vote in June without it going back to the Legislative Review Committee.
Is that, is that your?
I'm fine with that approach, yes.
Okay. So Commissioner Hool, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess just to follow up on what Commissioner Davenport explained, you know, I'd still welcome the memo so we can relay the information to our constituents as we need, but I think there's a pretty solid understanding here of what the ordinance does and does not do as written. And if we feel after we get that memo from the attorney that we need to go back to committee to look at it again, we could, but I just hesitate to, I think Commissioner Davenport's point is well taken that we can pass something today that gives people something to respond to tomorrow, and then if we decide that that's insufficient, we can at a later date revisit this in committee instead of kicking the can again. So that's my urging for us to move forward on this today and still ask for the memo from the attorney's office.
Commissioner Hool, just for my clarification also, because I'm on LRC. Commissioner Myers, are you saying that, are you saying that it may not have to come back to committee with some clarifications from the attorney or the manager's office?
Right, I'm suggesting that Commissioner Hamby's motion to hold it does not necessarily require it to go back to the LRC, but just to have clarification from the manager's office and the attorney's office.
Okay.
And then perhaps it can go back on the consent agenda in June.
Okay.
All right, we're going to go ahead for a vote, and we'll start with the substitute, oh, I'm sorry, did she have something she wanted to say? We're going to start with the substitute motion that was made by Commissioner Davenport, and I'll ask Madam Clerk to call the roll.
What is a substitute?
Could you, could you repeat your substitute motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hool, you made it.
Substitute motions to approve.
Approve.
Approve. Hool?
Yes.
Call Pepper?
No.
Myers?
No.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Taylor? Wright?
No.
Fisher?
No.
Okay.
Two yes, seven no.
Okay, for, so we're going to go back to the motion that was made by Commissioner Hamby and seconded by Commissioner Myers. Do you want to repeat exactly what that motion is, Commissioner Hamby?
My motion is to hold for thirty days to get clarification, or to our next voting session to get clarification from our attorney on the questions that were raised.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk?
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hool?
No.
Call Pepper?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no.
Okay. So I, so we will send this to, who are we getting clarification on? I just want to make sure.
Attorney.
The attorney's office. And then we'll revisit in June, right? Okay, great. All right, so I'm glad we did remember to go back and have input from the community. Okay, so now we're moving on to what would now be number twenty-one, the CY twenty-four Payment Maintenance Program roadway list resolution contract renewal.
I make a motion to support staff's recommendation to hold this item.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, we're at number twenty, item number twenty-two, the FY twenty-five Community Partnership Funding Recommendations. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the commission-to-find option presented in the agenda packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item number twenty-three, Spilas twenty-twenty Projects, Project Six, Fire Station Number Five Replacement Proposal, revise the site selection criteria.
Motion to hold until. Motion to hold till June fourth meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Adoption of the revised FY twenty-three twenty-five strategic plan, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Was there a CDO in that? Is that, is a CDO on that, isn't it?
There was, yeah, we're moving fast here with no discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Yes, there was a CDO on this.
There was, I'll make a motion to approve the CDO presented by myself and Commissioner Taylor.
And I second.
Okay. Discussion? Commissioner Hamby?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm going to make a motion to adopt the staff recommendation with the changes that were made. I'll second that.
Who's seconded? Call Pepper, okay. Discussion? I guess we'll start with the CDO.
Substitute motion.
The substitute motion.
Are we going to have, is discussion welcomed on this?
I can't hear you.
Are we able to speak to our motions?
Yes, that's what I'm asking you, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. And I guess we'll start with you, Commissioner Hool.
Yeah, the CDO here is pretty simple, as it says in your agenda packet, and as we discussed in our retreat when this came up in January, and also at the work session in the agenda setting, the only change here is to keep the language of strategy B under Goal Area One the same as it has been to date. So as a lot of revisions have been made to this document, it's just keeping this one portion of language the same. And the rationale behind that, which is also laid out in the comments of the CDO, is that the minor adjustment that staff made reduces the scope of this strategy by focusing only on recidivism, whereas the original language spoke to the jail population and supervised population generally. Sorry, I have something in my throat here. So there's lots of reasons why we might have people in our jail contributing to our ever-growing jail population besides just issues that center on recidivism, such as the length of time someone might stay in jail, or the terms of their sentence, or other things. And so it's with that in mind, because I believe there are things we can do in partnership with the courts to help people in our community out and help families out, and also to save money and to reduce the stress on our short-staffed sheriff's office, to reduce the jail population beyond just focusing on recidivism. That's all this really is, is retaining the language as it has been all along to allow for this strategy to include more than just recidivism. And the language, if it's helpful to read, is proactively reform systems of accountability to reduce jail and supervised population and plan for transitioning and returning residents.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Hool. Commissioner Taylor?
Ready to vote.
Okay. Well, at that point, we got to go to the other conversation. There's a substitute, there's another, I got you, Mr. Hamby. Commissioner Hamby, you want to speak to this?
I do.
Point of order, point of order, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I'm just having a hard time hearing, so I'm just going to ask all my colleagues and everyone to just speak real close to the mic, because I'm not, I'm missing a lot.
I think I did too, and I guess I was asking, I thought it was me, so I guess it's everybody. So. So, before we move to Commissioner Hamby, Commissioner Hall, can you, like, cut it down a little bit and just make sure we're getting the gist of what you're saying? And speaking to the mic?
Okay, I will eat this microphone here to try to reiterate but more concisely, the CDO keeps the language of the strategic plan for this particular section of it. It's only, it's only one section we're talking about, which is under goal area one, good neighbors, strategy B. It's keeping the language of that section the same as it has been all along. This is a document created by the mayor and commission and the, the staff recommended edits, which are generally all in alignment with what we've talked about, reduced this language slightly to make it only about recidivism instead of about jail population generally. And so, by maintaining the language as it is, per the recommendation from myself and Commissioner Taylor, we'd be leaving open the work before us to reduce the jail population generally for reasons that might not only be about recidivism, such as the length of time someone's sitting in jail or the terms of their bond or their sentence, things that we could partner with the courts on to help alleviate the burden on our own budget, the burden on the short-staffed experience of the Sheriff's Office, and also to help out families and individuals in our community.
Was that a little bit better, Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor for the CDO and there is a sub, there's another, I think Commissioner Hamby and Commissioner, was that, did you get, did we get, Call Pepper, I'm sorry. All right, Commissioner Hamby, you, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure, I sure will, thank you. And I think what we're looking at here are several changes throughout the strategic plan document that, that we had several meetings over and a trip to Amicalilla Falls. And during those retreats, I think it was discussed about what we're currently doing within this strategic plan and what could be changed and what could be taken out because of the work that staff is already doing. And this is one of those items. I think we've, we've, we looked at this and I think, I think with, with input from our police chief, specifically on this issue, you know, and, and our, and looking at our jail population, there is a problem with recidivism and people, people needing to, I mean, us needing to help address that. And I'll point to, to some of the stuff we're already doing as far as the substitute motion goes. I mean, look at number twenty-seven y'all for tonight's agenda. We're approving additional funding for the, for the alternative response team. That helps address what the CDO is addressing, to reduce jail population. So, we need to take a second look at some of these strategic plans, like we've done in other areas and like we're doing in this one, and say, hey, let's focus on the recidivism part and see if we can do something, do something about that and see how to, how to address that. So, it's really quite that simple and I appreciate what staff has done in putting this together. And I appreciate y'all's time in what we've did to discuss this. There were several hours of work at different retreats and different work sessions to help us nail down these ninety-seven strategic plan goals into a bit fewer one. And hopefully, we can keep knocking some off there so that it becomes a bit more manageable for everybody. So, it's, it's that, it's that simple. Thank you.
Commissioner Call Pepper, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, thank you. Um, I think we need to go with what staff recommended. I think we don't, we need to let the courts decide on the length of terms and we don't need to get involved in that. You know, we, staff worked hard with this wording and I think we need to stick with what they recommend.
Commissioner Wright?
Thank you. I also don't see that the commission defined option is an embellishment of what's in this document and what we worked on. I think it addresses a different avenue that doesn't align with what we had talked about, so I'm supporting the substitute motion.
Okay, great. Anybody, would any other, Commissioner Myers?
Yes, looking at this language closely, I, I am supportive of the, of the CDO but would like to make an amendment to that to say to reduce jail and supervised population, comma, reduce recidivism and plan for transitioning and returning students, restoring, returning residents. Too long in Athens tech. I think that, and I don't know if I'm making that motion correctly or making it too complicated. However, it combines both of those things and we have looked a lot about the reducing population in the jail. Uh, there's a big connection between that and the use of our accountability courts and our support for accountability courts. So, that's why I'd like to keep that in there as well as reducing recidivism, which is something that's been talked a lot about on our different gang task force that I'm on with Commissioner Fisher when we hear from the sheriff's staff talking about seeing the same people coming back. So, I, I agree with that focus on the recidivism, but I'd also like to make sure we're, we're continuing that focus on using our accountability courts to their maximum.
Com- com- Commissioner Davenport?
So, point of order would be you would like Hall or Taylor who, for the original motion, to amend their motion.
Right, and add a comma, reduce recidivism into that. Would you accept that or what's our order?
Commissioner Hall, would you be interested in her amendment?
Amendment.
I believe this way this needs to go procedures. We vote on the substitute motion, but if that fails, we'd go back to the original motion, which is obviously what I hope we would do. I'm amenable to, if we get there, amending the original motion to add that language. I mean, to clarify, recidivism is already implied as part of the existing language in our strategic plan.
Okay.
But to call that out specifically does make sense to me, so I'm, I'm amenable to adding that in there explicitly. And, you know, to respond to remarks I've heard from colleagues here, I just wanna share that, you know, keeping the language as it has been in our strategic plan does help us continue to do the things we are doing with supporting the accountability courts in our budget, with supporting the alternative response team in our budget, so that we are doing things like reducing the number of times people need to be arrested in the first place. Not everyone who gets arrested is being arrested again. Some of those people are being arrested for the first time. And so, if we're trying to reduce that generally, I think there's a value in keeping the language as is. But, of course, the focus on recidivism is important and so highlighting that in the language is something I'm amenable to doing if we get that far.
Okay. If there, are there, if there's no more comments, I'm going to move us forward with the vote on the substitute motion. And I'm not gonna ask Commissioner Hall to repeat now at this point, if that's okay with the clerk. Are, are, do you have the substitute, uh, the, well, you have the CDO though.
The substitute motion is to approve as presented, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what we're voting on.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, so.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
No.
Lee?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Pool?
No.
Call Pepper?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Four yes, five no.
Okay. Substitute motion?
I'll, I'm willing to amend the original motion to add the words reduce recidivism so that it reads proactively reform systems of accountability to reduce jail and supervised population, reduce recidivism and plan for transitioning and returning residents.
Um, Madam Clerk?
Pool?
Yes.
Call Pepper?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
We got through that, great. All right, now we're moving on to twenty-two.
Twenty-five.
Five. Okay, twenty-five, and we've, we've heard some people speak to twenty-five, so. Um, oh, excuse me, I, I didn't have that problem, did you? Okay, we're at number twenty-five.
Ms. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
If I might?
Yes.
We received updated figures from HUD this morning that represent a hundred and seventy thousand dollar reduction in the award. I'd like the ability or the time to work with staff to come back with recommendations on how to either supplement that or cut it. But time being of the essence, I would like to ask the commission respectfully if they would consider a special call session next Tuesday night to adopt that CDBG, so we have more time to explain to you how we'll do that this week and you will understand better what you're voting on.
So, you, you found out this morning?
Yes, ma'am. That's what I got heard.
Okay.
Motion to hold till next week.
Second.
Been motioned and seconded to hold because of the new notification. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we'll hold till next Tuesday. Is that right, manager?
Fourteen.
Okay. Now we are now at number twenty-six. Approval of the ARPA homeless funding recommendations.
Second.
I got a motion from Commissioner Taylor. Who seconded it, please? Commissioner Hall. Uh, any discussion? Oh, Commissioner, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Davenport.
Commissioner Davenport put his hand up when he said that, so. Let me see, you, you, all right, can I give it to the, you have nothing to say, right? Commissioner Hall, you have any comments?
Not unless there's a debate to have here.
No, there's no debate, there's no debate. We're good. Commissioner, um, Davenport?
Yes. Um, at our agenda setting meeting, I misspoke and did not mean to offend any of the homeless population. What I was trying to get at is just the business model of using homeless individuals as a caretaker. Not that, it's not feasible, but HCD provided us some information, okay, I'm sorry, I am speaking on. Okay. But yeah, so I, I, I didn't, I do apologize I was not to be offensive to our homeless population, but just for the EJC, and not anything against EJC, I love EJC. There's actually a couple other of these that I have concerns about because one of the things that we do oftentimes is we donate to entities so we can see a positive impact in our community. And oftentimes, we give out funds but we don't see any feedback and then we get questions by our community that, hey, no one's doing anything, but there's proof that we've given money to, to these entities to actually do the work. With the CNA training, the payroll, the medical billing, just, it will be better if EJC used that money for a worker center, which will benefit the vast majority of individuals in Athens, especially because Athens is a service industry. We have a lot of waiters, waitresses and people in the service industry who need proper training to organize, who need proper training to know their rights. But I just, I question some of the entities that are getting funded and how that funding is actually gonna be used. And so, I will be denying our agenda item twenty-six.
Commissioner Fisher, Commissioner Myers?
So, to follow up with Commissioner Davenport, one of the things that I'm gonna request when we go through our budget process, that any funding that we give to nonprofits that they do either a monthly or a quarterly report to us because since I've been on this commission and he's right, we, we, we give money to nonprofits, but we don't hear anything once they receive those funds. And so, my request is gonna be, once we move forward to approve, that they be mandated to give us some type of data, some type of follow-up so we'll know what they're doing and how they're making an impact on the community.
I, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I do think monthly, Commissioner, I mean Commissioner, Assistant Manager Jones, since Blaine is not there. These nonprofits do report monthly, isn't that correct?
Yes, ma'am, for the most part, and sometimes they report more than that. It just depends on.
But, but, but I guess the gap is they report to HCD, but we do not, we have not gotten those reports.
As the commission?
Yes.
No, ma'am?
That is the concern that Commissioner Fisher is, is raising. I, I mean, he, he just put it out there, but I'm just saying.
Well, if that's the case, then maybe, well, I should recommend that if they're sending to HCD, that we get copies of nonprofits' data and outcomes and what they're doing for the monies that we are funding them with.
Yes, sir. Uh, not all nonprofits are on the dashboard right now, but many of them, many of our contracts have a dashboard and all those outcomes and their performance measures are on that dashboard, funds spent to date, those sorts of things. However, if, if the commission would like some sort of report, we're happy to provide that. We certainly provide it to every commissioner, of course, and, you know, we could start with a template that we would share with y'all just to make sure it's what you want and just let us know how often and what type of information you want and, you know, we can make it happen.
Thank you. I think that's, that's a great idea, Call. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers, I think I saw your hand next.
Yes, yes. Um, I'm going to approve this. I think it moves forward with that plan that we put together and approved back last October, the strategic plan to reduce and prevent homelessness. And there were three sections in this, RFPs that went out that we're approving tonight that are moving forward our work on that strategic plan. And one has to do with increasing low barrier shelter, emergency shelter and transitional housing. Then there's the care of the individuals with comprehensive street outreach, including mental health work, physical healthcare needs and funds to address taking care, dealing with homeless encampments that come up that need to be, there need to be home places for those people to relocate to. And then also the, the great supportive services that are helping make sure there's a, we help and get ahold of the landlords, that we get people into employment. So, I'm very supportive of this, but I do agree with Commissioner Fisher that, and perhaps it's all out there, but to have easier access to all of this. Uh, we've moved some of these votes forward to the next month, but there are many millions of dollars that we're, were planned to approve this month, which go to incredibly wonderful nonprofits in our community that are doing great work, both with, with youth, with homeless, with mental health. So, I support those efforts and I look forward to reviewing those dashboards and perhaps getting it in a easier to digest format, perhaps as a way to put something in our FTP site so that we can easily access it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davenport?
Yes. So, just manager Williams or assistant manager. So, I've looked at that dashboard and I just wanna make sure i- i- is the information just, is the information vetted? Because I could be wrong, just the information on the dashboard seems general to me, but if you can explain to me and to the public, that'd be helpful when the nonprofits report.
Commissioner, I mean, yeah, could you speak up?
Sorry. The information's taken directly from the reporting from the nonprofits and there are assigned staff that work with those folks to, you know, quality control that and try to, and as y'all know, sometimes we have to ask for more information for clarification. It's a back and forth. Obviously, mandated more intensely with federal dollars as opposed to general fund, but to Assistant Manager Jones's point, we're glad to report that. I believe there is a general fund tab on the performance dashboards and we're glad to capture this. I think this body's been consistent about wanting to see outcomes for the investments that are placed in there. I think that's something we can do.
Manager, if I might add, not all nonprofits are the same, so depending on what their scope of services is, the reporting will be a little bit different.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on this? Are we ready to vote on this? There's no substitute motion, so we're going to go with, can I, we did get the motion in a second, did we get the motion in a second? Okay. And we had the discussion. So, all in favor of item number 26? Say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Me.
Him, Patrick? So we have. Now we're moving on to item number 27. Approve the additional funding for alternative response team, Art.
Motion to approve.
Oh, okay.
So moved.
So there was motion by Commissioner Hamby, seconded by Commissioner Wright.
I guess so.
All, any comment?
Yes, ma'am, I sure do. I just want to say, you know, in working and seeing the work of the co-responders team, and I just can't help but think back to the actual title of the co-responder teams, the Jerry Neesmith Behavioral Co-Responder Teams. And Jerry was a strong advocate for us doing things like we're doing in our strategic plan to help reduce our jail population, to help with recidivism. And the co-responder teams, from what you can see in the agenda report, have been real successful. And what we're funding here is to help supplement some of those co-responder teams with the alternative, alternative response team. And I've seen it with our Downtown Development Authority as well, you know, we, the Downtown Development Authority helps fund a little bit of the outreach program that works with the co-responder teams and the alternative response teams. And we recently had a presentation from our police department and from behavioral health in working with this and see the success of it. And I'm just, you know, just wanted to make mention that, you know, that certainly what Jerry saw and what Jerry knew we could do, and it's fitting that this program is named after Jerry. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's second? Commissioner Wright, you have any comments?
I'm ready to vote.
Commissioner Davenport had his hand up. Commissioner Link, did I see yours? Okay.
So this is separate from the co-responder team with the police department. This is with Advantage Behavioral Health, where someone in crisis will call Advantage Behavioral Health instead of 911, correct?
The co-responder team also works with Advantage.
Yeah. But yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
He wants to know, do they call 911 or this other number? Commissioner Hall may be able to answer.
Yeah, I think I can speak to this as the commission's representative on the Advantage Board. So there's two programs, both are partnerships with Advantage. There's the co-responder program, where a social worker employed by Advantage is partnered with a police officer to answer calls. And then this program, the alternative response team, which initially got off the ground through ARPA funding, American Rescue Plan Act funding, is a non-police crisis response. So it's a three-person team of a medical professional, peer specialist, so someone who has lived experience with substance use, but is now, you know, sober and working on a team like this, and a social worker. And they do a mix of things, so they are sometimes directly dispatched by 911 for certain calls. They are sometimes called out by a co-responder team or another officer on scene to take over in certain situations. And they additionally do wraparound work, so, you know, a lot of the work Advantage tries to do is stay engaged with people to keep them from ending up in crisis again. And so someone that they respond to, generally speaking, they try to follow up with in the days and weeks ahead to help them get stabilized and remain connected with or get connected with services. So I do hope that we can move forward with this alternative response team funding to get us through the rest of this fiscal year, and I hope that we will continue to support it in the budget throughout this month. Thanks.
Okay. Any more comments? Ready to vote? All in favor of, all in favor of item 27?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ayes have it, thank you. Now we're heading on into new business and under, and we're going to be requesting again suspension of rules. Can I get a motion? The move is motioned by Commissioner Davenport and Commissioner Taylor. And here at this point, let me get my little desk things, I wanted to announce the authorities that.
Madam Mayor, do we need to vote on that motion?
Say that again?
Do we need to vote on that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
And while you're on the vote, and I'm still trying to find my paper, anybody against? Okay, thank you.
Did you have a motion?
Yeah, we did get the motion. The motion was from Davenport and Taylor. Yeah.
Davenport, Taylor, that was the rule, so this is to adopt.
Okay, now, yeah, and so now we're going to make a motion, this still is not the right one.
We need to adopt and then read up through recommendations. Did I get the one?
No, there's one more that Commissioner Hall added, was one name left off?
Yeah.
He gave me that one.
But he would have to give you the other name on that.
But the one for?
It was on HBC.
I got, I got with Commissioner Hall.
That should be the same thing, except adding that one person, HBC, who was left off.
Okay, now, all right, so what did you say?
We need a motion and a suck-up to adopt it, then we need to read the recommendations.
All right, I found my paperwork. Okay, we, I think everybody should have had these at their seat. Can we get a motion to adopt, a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt the recommendations as typed up with the addition of the third member for HBC as submitted by the ad hoc committee yesterday.
Second.
Motion seconded by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Fisher. Okay, well, in the mayor's absence, I'm proud, glad to announce the following committee members that will serve on the different authorities. Airport Authority, William Alexander, a four-year term expiring in 6/30/28. Classic City, and Keith Sanders, a four-year term. Classic City Authority, Dexter Haynes and Trace Small. Hearing Committee, Hearing Board, Richard Martin and Richard Stansel, both will be embarking on four-year terms. Historic Preservation, we have Ted Rosser, Lori Medlin Erman, and George Ronnick, Ron Runic. They will be serving with Historic Preservation Committee. Each will be serving three-year terms. And I'm not sure, okay. And now we got Human Relations, we've got Sherry LeBlume, she'll be serving a partial term. Todd Lovett, partial term for 30 to 2026. Melanie Lewis, a four-year term. And Sandra Nicole Washington, she'll be also be on a four-year term. The Joint Development Authority of Athens Clark County in Winterville, we have Erica Cosco. We have Stephanie Lynn. Erica will be serving a two-year term. Stephanie Lynn will be also serving a two-year term. And Steve Cantinelli will be serving a four-year term. The Planning Commission is Michael Lord, he'd be serving a five-year term, expiring in 6/30/29. Carrie McCollin, a five-year term. And then Sheila Collins, a partial term expiring in 6/30/25. Those are our new appointees. Commissioner, he's pointing at somebody, who you pointing at?
I think we got the motion in the second, but we still need to vote, Madam Mayor Protam. We had the motion from myself and the second from Commissioner Fisher, but we still need to vote.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, congratulations to these new appointees. We're moving right along here. Now we are to the public input from those items that are not on the agenda. We have a list of people that have signed up accordingly, and I am going to ask Commissioner Davenport to help me out, because I got to step out for a minute to the bathroom. And if you will call each person, they're given three minutes to speak, and we'll go from there, okay?
All righty.
Does anybody else need a break? Y'all good?
First person, Rachel Kircher.
Hi, I'm Rachel Kircher. I reside at 1207 James Walter Dry. I'm a special education teacher, mother of three. I attended UGA for undergrad, where I studied English, and spent many years working for the Downtown Athens Parking Authority. In that time, my husband and I have held Athens dear and near to our heart. It was in Athens at Avid Bookshop where I first encountered one of my favorite poets, C.A. Conrad, as they read one of their poems, which contains a line that has been stuck at the front of my mind for the last decade. "I make holes in Afghan families every time I pay my taxes." Written in comment to the wars in the Middle East, the sentiment holds painfully true today. It elicits the devastating tension between the seemingly innocuous and mundane act of paying taxes and insidious and inescapable consequences wrought by our taxpayer dollars. In America, we cannot even buy bread without blood. And there never seems to be enough blood. For the past seven months, we have witnessed unprecedented violence. From the screen on my phone, I have seen men, women, children, babies blown apart, crushed, live streams of war crimes as I make grilled cheese for my kids, as I wonder how they will ever believe this government will protect them, will protect the least of them, when it cannot even do the least. I look to the cultural inheritance that my children will be given, and I desperately hope it is one of a great embrace of community, of justice, and not a culture of cowardice in the name of comfort. I urge this body to do the least and put the ceasefire resolution on the agenda, to stand with other municipalities, to let the will of the people be not only heard but enacted upon. I know this small body here does not have a direct influence on international politics, but I do hope that where we cannot enact direct policy, we can at least make a stand on morality and on our humanity.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel Kircher. Linda Protki.
I just want to share some of my observations as to why many people in Athens Clark County feel they have not been represented by this government and why they feel their voices aren't heard, just in case anyone here wants to try to make a change. The number one reason is because Mayor Gertz has an ear for activists. He listens to them. In 2019, socialist activists were thrilled that they were instrumental in getting elected the most progressive mayor and commissioners ever in Athens, and they stated they looked forward to working with the new government. Keep in mind that many taxpayers are not progressives, and keep in mind that many activists are paid to implement it. And it certainly feels that since 2019, an agenda has been pushed on the people of Athens. This is opposite of what is supposed to happen with government by the people and for the people. People with opposing, second point is, people with opposing viewpoints to the mayor seemingly do not get interviews for openings on the numerous committees, boards, and authorities whose job it is to provide input to the mayor and commission. Therefore, input received by the commission is likely one-sided. Number three, when public opinion is requested, as in surveys, the surveys turn out to be biased. Imagine that. I recently started to take the future land use survey, and looking through the multiple choice answers, none of my answers were there. Later, I attended a presentation and asked one of the people at the forum about the survey bias. He explained to me that the survey questions were biased based on the findings from the original survey six months prior. Based the answers they got, created new questions, and therefore, because I was unaware of that first survey, none of my input gets listened to, gets heard, it's not included. And that does raise the question, who were the majority of the survey takers six months ago? Number four, rules are changed at the last minute, location change for this meeting, and a change in the number of citizens.
Ms. Linda? Ms. Linda? Ms. Linda?
Lastly, many people in this government is tainted by bias.
Ms. Linda?
I'm just about done. After all, one.
Ms. Linda?
Yes, I'm about done.
Ms. Linda?
After Commissioner Oberle attacks some of Athens citizens, calling them bigots.
Ms. Linda? Oh, Lord, here we go again. Let's go, let's, she doesn't.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Now we have John. John, I can't pronounce your last name, could, would you speak to it when you get to the mic, please?
John Wilks, that ought to be the easy one, but anyway.
No, I just didn't understand your writing.
Oh, okay. Anyway, I've been here since 69, been here a long time, and I've got a shocker for y'all. We don't need trails, we don't need to put more money in that stuff, wasted money, tax dollars money people work hard for. Because I've got a shocker. Since 80 years now, we have had sidewalks, we call them sidewalks, beautiful, down Village, Boulevard, down around the university, and I'll see, it makes me mad when I see y'all set up here to spend money in different types of ways all the time, try to create, there's no apartment shortages. I called around, they would like to find some people to rent them a cubicles, like to put pet rats in, but they can't find enough people. So building on that, supporting it with money, it's a waste. And one other thing, you know, I think one of your commissioners should be censored for talking bad about some of the citizens. She's transgender lop lizard, she hates pickup trucks, I went and bought me a damn another one. I have one there since I was 16, I buy a lot of them, I love them. Some people never understand how nice they are. That's all I'm going to build Saturday.
Mr. Wilks, thank you. Ellie Lewis?
I'm here once again to ask for the ceasefire resolution to be adopted by this commission. We've come here several times and making the moral argument, so I just want to, once again, go ahead and make the political one, since we are now at over 30,000 children, women, men, journalists, aid workers, killed with our tax dollars, and that has not moved commission members who are still saying that they do not know how they would vote on this or are ready to vote no. So I did want to just share that two-thirds of Americans at this point support a ceasefire resolution. Less than 36% of Americans support continued military aid to Israel, and over 65 cities and municipalities have already passed ceasefire resolutions like the one we have given you guys several months ago. The reason we are continually bringing this up on a local level is one of the things we did put in our ceasefire resolution was to ask that this be sent to Biden and Harris. It's a way for you to amplify your constituents' voices. It's a way for you to find another way to be in the way of a continued and confirmed genocide. The latest package to Israel, $26 million, which, again, less than 36% of Americans support, would have solved most of the issues in Athens if we were given even a tenth of that. It would have solved homelessness in all of America two times over. You guys are talking about scrambling for 100K because the CBD, the CDB grant fell short, but again, three packages of multi-millions of dollars in military aid was given to a country with a case in the Hague. We're asking. We're asking you once again to adopt this ceasefire.
Ms. Ealing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dialing? Where you at? Hey there. Come on down.
Hello, my name is Dylan Woolsey, 395 River Road. I just want to speak since the mayor released their budget recommendations and budget meetings are starting this month. I think that the one million the mayor proposed in terms of supporting affordable workforce housing is not enough. The affordable housing plan that was accepted by the commission last fall calls for at least five million. And the most important part of that plan, which involves LIHTC housing in terms of gap billing, this recommends for two million for that and the one million adopted, the one million proposed by the mayor is only half of that. So I hope that during your budget talks over this next month, that any additional money that is found or expected to be gone in terms of revenue can be put into more affordable workforce housing as recommended by the accepted, adopted plan by the commission for affordable housing last fall. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our last speaker of the evening is Erin McCray, McCoy, McCray? McCoy, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Erin Galvin McCoy, resident of District 10. I will be, just give a couple of brief comments. First of all, I would also like to, the commission, to consider the primary recommendation of last year's housing report, which recommends this additional five million for a local housing fund and to consider options to funnel more into this plan. I would also like to urge the commission to consider adopting the ceasefire resolution, which we have sent to the commission, a draft based on the resolution adopted by Bellingham, Washington. We are happy to send it again should anyone concern. There is still time to put pressure on the federal government to save lives in Gaza, to stop using our federal tax dollars to fund not only this genocide, but militias committing war crimes in places like Sudan and to affirm the support of the Athens Clark County government for affected Palestinian, Arab, Muslim, and Jewish Athenians. We have seen UGA's disproportionate response to protesters in this regard in this past week and Athens now has an opportunity to do better and I hope you will take it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCray. Those are all of our speakers for this evening. Thank you for adjusting this transition for us. And with that, I'm going to turn to, oh, well, says a report from the mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, so I guess I'll speak. We did our third annual housing summit earlier this month and the project is called, and we targeted calling it Project Eighty-eight Hundred. Eighty-eight Hundred is eight thousand eight hundred housing, home we would need to even begin to address the affordable housing issue here. I am real excited about some new initiatives that I'll be talking with the commissioners and the mayor about that I think that we can intentionally address affordable housing here. We've been meeting for three years. HCD has been working on it. We've paid over four hundred thousand dollars in a study. We should be able to create and build housing. And I think we've got some new data that I'm very hopeful about. So hopefully, even after the summer, I think we will see some real movement in that direction. I also like, and I don't know about Commissioner Fisher and Commissioner Hall, but we did attend ACC Gov meeting. I think that it is important that when we go to these trainings that we at least let you know that we went and let you know something we learned. And I looked at, I attended actually the workforce development session and I've shared with some of my colleagues that when we talk about workforce development, we got to make sure we're also talking about the wide range of workforce development. Normally, we're talking about youth. That twenty, you know, eighteen, twenty, maybe even younger. But people, adults like myself are living longer. We don't survive totally on our social security. So when we, I hope that as we move forward talking about workforce development, that we will have, keep in mind that wider range. And I think Commissioner Fisher already has told me that's part of a plan. But I know traditionally, we have not talked about the baby boomers. And lastly, I do have regular meetings in my community around the issues that impact mainly the issues that folk are seeing day to day. I'm open to it. I did see some of the tech, social media that was floating around today about putting pressure on me. You know, I don't think pressure is democracy. And we're always talking about democracy. I don't think pressure is democracy. But needless to say, if you feel like that's the way to address me, that's fine. But I will say that my beliefs are, I do support a ceasefire, but also support a ceasefire in Africa. I support ceasefires where, in Nelly B, Rock Springs. So I'm pretty much not the one you probably need to pressure. I'm not the one. So just scratch my name off that list and we'll move on. So that's the comments from the Mayor Pro Tem. And I'm going to see if there's a report from the manager.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I have two use of contingency situations to report as per our procedure. Got a request from Animal Services. They do a lot of medical interventions on behalf of animals. And they, every year run a little bit high depending on what the volume and pace of that is. And this year is no different. What's different this year is that Animal Services is more fully staffed. In the past, we were able to take salary savings and help cover that. So they had to come forth and ask for an additional twenty-five thousand. A separate matter, Central Services asked for twenty thousand dollars to add tamper-resistant toilets to the corrections facility to cut down on maintenance calls. And I approved that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Williams. Mr. Gavin?
No report.
Okay. Attorney, anything you'd like to?
No report.
Okay. Commissioners, this is your time to shine. We're going to start all the way down here. Commissioner Hamby?
It's about time I go first.
You never paid me enough.
Yeah. I just want to give a few thanks to certainly the school board and Dr. Hooker for letting us use this nice facility. It's, I don't know if all of y'all know this, but I used to, I used to clean this building. So I know every nook and cranny associated with it. And they've, they've done a really good job improving the building. But if y'all indulge me for just one moment, just this real positive email I got today and I just wanted to share it with y'all. It was, and I'm not going to mention who sent it out of their privacy, but I don't think they mind me reading it. And it's addressed to Suki. Dear Ms. Jansen, we have just started side yard sanitation service because of my back surgery. If all goes well, I'll be able to do it myself in six months. I was out this morning because I wanted to apologize for the extra work the drivers had to do and also apologize for the overgrown bushes on either side of the path of the carts. I wanted to let them know two weeks from now, the bushes would be trimmed by our lawn maintenance guys who have, we have hired because we weren't able to do it any longer. As the second driver, Axel, was returning the carts to the side yard, I told him that my spouse would be able to pull them back as they can do that when they are empty and going downhill. It's a little bit easier. Behind his bright smile, Axel said that that was unnecessary as they provided full service. And the constituent goes on to say, I've rarely seen, I've rarely seen anybody that bright and evervessant in any setting, much less in the morning on a sanitation route. He was terrific. And he wanted me to say, would you please let the first driver, I think his name is Gene, know that I'm sorry for the extra work they're having to do. Please tell him that I was approved for this service almost a year ago by Dallas, but he's been trying to do it himself, but got to a point where he couldn't. And he did it to do the exercise despite the pain he was in. He goes on to write, I know the difficult job these guys have and I didn't want to add to their burden. But after my back surgery, I cannot, he didn't want to risk any damage to that. So any rate, he wanted to thank, thanks for all you do and for your employees for us. And so just another thank you to Axel, Gene, Dallas, and Director Suki Jansen. Just thought I would like some, a little bit of positive stuff for a change. Thank you.
We don't get a bunch of those. Commissioner Myers?
Yes. Hi, everyone, and thanks to the school district for this. We're all going to need to learn how to use these mics and listen well here. But anyway, the one, two things I just wanted to bring up are a couple of task force I'm working with some of my colleagues on just so that everyone knows in the, in the public that we have a workforce, an ARPA workforce task force that I'm co-chairing with Commissioner Taylor. And we're working on, I have three subgroups, working on higher wage jobs, small businesses, and worker support and empowerment. And we're looking to put forth with this group and with the community input, some strategies for moving ahead with using some of our ARPA funds. And what I find interesting there is how it overlaps with the work that Commissioner Fisher and I are doing with the Boys and Girls Club on the Delinquency Prevention Initiative, where one of the things we were talking about, speaking to what Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem Thornton was talking about, was second chance, second chance employment and youth employment, youth apprentices and so forth. So I look forward to our two groups moving forward. And please feel free to reach out to myself and my colleagues who are working on these. And of course, the second thing is a real important thing we've got going on this month and that's elections. So we are just two weeks out from Election Day, May 21st. I want to urge everyone to vote. We have a lot of important elections besides some commissioner races up here across the county. Early voting goes through, is going on right now. It goes on downtown through this week. Starting this Saturday, we have Saturday voting not only downtown, but at the Marion Moore Center, ACC Library, the Cooperative Extension Office, the Tennis Center, and in Winterville. And then all next week is the last week of early voting with the voting going late on Wednesday at seven. So please, everyone, get out and vote and we'll know the winners in a month or so. So thank you so much.
Yes, I know our tax bills came out this week. I've got a lot of emails regarding that and the increase in property taxes. As we go into budget season, my commitment to y'all is we will, I will work hard to roll back. We rolled back the military last year and work hard again to do that this year also and make sure we're being fiscally responsible with taxpayer dollars. I'd also like to thank staff for the hard work they did to get everything in line for us to be able to meet in this location today. And I'd like to thank school board for hosting us here.
I think it's okay to repeat, so I'm going to. I do want to thank the school districts, their staff, and the board for offering us the use of this space. Really want to thank ACC Gov staff for pivoting to make this work. The manager's office, the attorney's office, our clerk and deputy clerk, ACCPD, Central Services, and especially PIO, I think the Public Information Office maybe has had the roughest go of it. So really appreciate them making this work. And as a note for the public, if you're not already aware, there's this thing they put out called the ACC Gov Mixtape. That's a pretty cool, interactive, digital version of a newsletter. And I'd recommend everyone give that a look. They're still churning out stuff like that while having to pivot for this. Hearing Mayor Pro Tem's suggestion, I will say, I'll share one thing from the conference that we all attended in Savannah. I went to a land use and planning class and I do look forward to bringing some of the information I learned into our discussion around future land use map and some zoning code revisions and other efforts generally with regard to affordable housing and infrastructure and sustainable development. And the last thing I'll share is I do continue to ask colleagues and the mayor, even though he's not here today, to consider putting a ceasefire resolution on our agenda. I do still think it would be meaningful. Thanks.
So since we've been talking about housing, I do want to make an announcement about housing. And one of the things we don't talk about enough is senior housing. Ebenezer Baptist Church West on April 18th closed on seventy acres of land off of Freeman Drive, Hawkins Lane to build a hundred and forty units for senior housing, affordable senior housing. That project will start pretty soon, but I think as a community, we really need to at least start looking at senior housing. I'm anxious to see how that project is going to progress. I think it's going to be a starting point where we can really help some of our residents here in this community. So I'm excited about that. And the second thing, like I said, our budget process starts this Thursday down at the planning building. Please come out. We really would like to have your input into our budget. It is online and listed. But I think it's going to be important as we move forward that we, first of all, responsible for the budget, be transparent in what we're doing with the budget and making sure that we're spending our tax dollars wisely. So please come out. The next three Thursdays, we'll be available for those budget hearings. Thank you.
I also would like to thank Superintendent Hooker and the school district staff for everything they've done to allow us to be in their facility. And it's very touching to be in the Vernon Payne Meeting Hall as well as the area that's named after Reverend Nutley. And as I look at my previous city waters, when we were four years on the school board together, Ovita, you and I in our eight years, Vernon Payne and Reverend Nutley were instrumental in our guidance and staying on topic. I want to thank our staff, the unified government staff and all that extra work for us to be relocated and have our home here in May. I encourage everybody to look on the calendar. Our website has a wealth of information. You can sign up for notifications and you would have had the information about the changes today come to you on text or email or however you choose for notifications. I also hope that everybody looks at, early voting is on right now. And I encourage everyone to go to the Board of Elections website so that you can see all the details for early voting. May 21st is Election Day. We have moved our meeting from Tuesday night to be Wednesday, the 22nd, so that we can focus on work and not be distracted about election events and that are happening statewide for some of them. So, and locally, very important races. And that's the information I wanted to share tonight. And thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for taking the helm on all these changes and staff support to making sure we did it just right. Thank you.
Yeah, I echo all of the sentiments of my colleagues to the school board for allowing us to use, this is so amazing. It looks, I don't want to go back to City Hall, and to our staff for accommodating us. Yeah, so in light of everything that's been going on in our community as far as the shootings and the loss of life, with Mother's Day coming up in my district this Saturday, we will be hosting a Mother's Day brunch at 11 o'clock at the Aaron Hurt Community Center. That is 400 McKinley Drive. And so I encourage everyone to come and celebrate, moms only, sorry, fellas, next month, maybe, for Father's Day. But this Saturday, we'll be celebrating moms. And so if you are available, come and join us. That's all I have.
I want to thank the school district and our police officers for keeping us safe in these troubled times. It's really a shame that we live in a world in which a certain contingent of our society believes that they should be able to society believes that they should be able to influence politics with violence and intimidation and harassment. And I look forward to seeing the upgrades in City Hall, so everybody can be safe and our democracy can move forward. I appreciate the folks advocating for Palestine. I would support a ceasefire resolution. It remains to be seen if we could get one on the agenda. Um, I also, um, I was shocked tonight to find out about the CBDG funds not coming through. So I look forward to hearing from management about what we might be able to do to see to it that those programs, those recommended programs, as well as the ones that we sought to fund through our CDO will get funded. I'm, I'm particularly concerned about, um, the ones that weren't initially recommended, especially the YWCA program. In this day and age, it's, it's really important that our young ladies have activities. Um, we live in a world in which they no longer have certain rights and freedoms and choices that many of us had, so we need to make sure that they have appropriate activities to engage in, and that program has, um, you know, a broad range of activities, including healthy relationship guidance, um, which is really necessary in a world in which sexual predators and, and pernicious misogynists are routinely elevated to positions of power. So I wanna make sure that as we move forward, that, that those programs and that YWCA program in particular gets funded. Thanks.
Alrighty. First of all, I'd like to thank CCSD, I know, um, it's a parrot right now, keep repeating this, but thank CCSD, Blaine, and all the staff. But I am ready to get back in City Hall. I like having the people, I like seeing the pores on their face. We're kinda like far away, um, and it's kinda hard to hear, um, but, um, look forward to getting back to City Hall, but thank you, CCSD and staff and all for, for working this out. Athens is a great city. I know a lot of people don't think so, but, um, we have, you know, Solid Waste has won a lot of awards, um, um, thank you Water Treatment, um, for winning, uh, awards as well, but I found out today that Athens Clark County is designated as the first gold-level bio-ready county in Georgia. And you can go to our website, ACC Gov, to find out more, but it is awesome. And I'd like to say, thank staff for, um, and, um, and our employees for their commitment to making Athens awesome. Since we missed last month's meeting, I do wanna say I will miss you, Josh Edwards. I meant to say that at our last meeting, but congrats to Lisa Lot for her new venture. Congratulations to Victor Pope, and welcome Josh Hawkins from Overtrop County. This Saturday, I know it's competing, um, but in Winterville, Georgia, there will be a Marigold Festival. It's fun, it's awesome, a lot of flowers, a lot of people, great food. Please come out, and there's a five K. Um, and thank you for all the employees for their, um, all the ACC Gov employees for, um, all the work they have done. That was a beautiful, unfortunately, I was not able to make it, but it was a beautiful employee appreciation at Santa Creek, yes, um, last week, or two weeks ago, last week, and, um, the food was good. So thank y'all for all that, and motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Then motion, second, all favor?
Aye.
Anybody wanna stay? Look, meeting adjourned.